All right, it is 7:00 PM. I would like to go ahead and call to order this regular city council meeting for Monday, September 23rd, 2024. Would all rise for the pledgeable agents, please?
Pledgeable agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Holly, will you call the roll, please? Lannion?
President.
Pratt? Jenkins?
Here.
Ben Alsperg?
Here.
Rhines?
Here.
Gilroy?
Here.
Hanson?
Yes.
I did receive a call from Councilman Pratt that he was not going to be able to be here this evening because he is a little under the weather, so I would entertain a motion to excuse his absence.
Move to excuse Councilman Pratt?
Thank you. Do I have support?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Thank you so much. Now I'm looking for approval of this evening's agenda unless there are any changes that need to be noted.
So.
Thank you so much. Your support. Thank you both. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries as well. Thank you. Now we have an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation. Is there anyone that would like to come forward at this time? All right. Moving along on our agenda, we have our council meeting minutes of September 9th, 2024. I'd like to thank Mayor Pro Tem Lannion for leading that council meeting. Are there any changes that need to be made or would somebody like to make a motion for those minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as soon as it is.
Thank you very much. Your support.
Sure.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Branding you an opportunity to review accounts payable.
I did. We have a little bit of a big one this time. We sent all of our tax payments out to all of our different entities, but other than that, it's our typical expenses as usual. I didn't have any questions, so unless anyone else does, I would make a motion to approve EFT 1095, checks 77815 through 77843, and ACH 1077 through 1112 for a grand total of $2,713,000, $1,679.96.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
I saw the size of the number here and I thought, golly, that's a huge, huge number. So I got on my calculator and I figured out the number of dollars that we just passed through. And the 2.7 million, we only kept 1 million. 1.7 million just flowed on through, which I think is significant. Just flowed as well.
Yeah, I mean, most of that's going to our, to Ingham County, to our different, the school districts, treasurer, Lansing Community College, our own school district. So there's a lot of different hands we have to feed.
Yep, exactly.
To taxpayers.
I was surprised at the percentage, though. That was, yeah.
It's the dollars that come in on that fall tax roll, and so, you know, our obligation is to meet that and send those out. Same thing in the spring, or the summer taxes when we have that. We'll have some sizable checks at that time, too, so.
So I made my motion?
Yes, and would somebody like to support? Thank you. Holly, will you call the roll, please? Ben Alsperg?
Yes.
Rhines?
Yes.
Gilroy? Yes. Lannion?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
All right, moving on to our action items. We have five action items before us. The first is the reappointment of Tammy Scott for a term to expire 6/30/2027, and this is for our Parks and Recreation Commission. She's been a longtime volunteer. I'm looking forward, a motion to reappoint her.
Move to reappoint Tammy Scott to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Thank you. Thank you both so much. And again, that's a term to expire 6/30 of 2027. If there's no discussion, Holly, will you call the roll, please? Rhines?
Yes.
Gilroy? Yes. Lannion?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Alsperg?
Yes.
And for our viewing audience out there, if you are interested in volunteering for any of our boards or commissions that have open seats, you can find those vacancies listed on our website. You can contact City Hall at 655-2774 if you have questions regarding submitting an application for a board seat. We love to have volunteers fill those seats. Our second action item is the first reading of amendment to zoning ordinance for the address of 301 Lynn Road. We do have a memo in our packet. I'm going to turn that over to our city manager, John Hanipin.
Thank you, and good evening, council. At our September 3rd Planning Commission meeting, we had a public hearing for our requested amendment to the Williamson zoning ordinance for the property 301 Lynn Road to be rezoned from our one-family rural residential and open space to our three multiple-family residential district. The public hearing was held. We did hear from folks. Had a lighter attendance than some recent Planning Commission meetings, but folks spoke both in favor and some other folks had some questions about it. But Planning Commission did adopt that unanimously and early process when there's a rezoning. After they approve, it's sent to council for a first reading, and if that's successful, then it's set for a second reading. So there is a resolution that was prepared by our city attorney, and staff does recommend approval. And what the project ultimately will be, it's either eight or 10 complexes with an apartment building, approximately 150 to 175 residential units, pending a site plan. And that's the other part of the process. This is just a rezoning for the property to allow them to pursue a higher density, but there's still a ways to go as far as all meeting all the site plan requirements.
Excellent.
Have to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council?
Did you say it was an apartment?
Yes.
Yeah, there's a combination of, there are either eight complexes or 10 complexes, which is, and these are all market rate rental units. So there'd be basically condo-type rentals, two-story buildings, and then the possibility of a four- or five-story apartment building.
Okay, so in your opinion, given the housing we already have and given the attitudes of the schools who are pertaining to how they want to keep kids around, does this fit in with that?
I would say that adding to our housing portfolio is a good thing, and I think that in particular, because these are market rate, I think that that helps. I know once upon a time, I started out in an apartment building when I was first married and then settled in a community, and so that happens. I know other folks have that same story.
So I'll add in, the school board did come, or at least Dr. Spina came on behalf of the school board in the schools and came to support this.
He did.
You know, obviously, his position, and I think all of our position, is that, you know, having single-family housing would be phenomenal, but as we look at that district, I think that this is the benefit of a start to it. You know, similarly, you know, we started off our family in an apartment and then moved into a house, and, you know, given the drought that we had of single-family homes, I think this will give the transition period for some folks to be able to live in the community, start their kids at the schools, and then move in. So I think that this could be a benefit and start to develop that area that we've been desperately trying to do for a long time.
Dan, go ahead. You had your hand up.
Two quick things. So we're taking a nearly 15-acre parcel and let's say, you know, you divide that by four for single-family houses, you're getting far smaller amounts of room than you would with the multi-unit development. Obviously, we would prefer, you know, a subdivision, but at the same time, as we've had conversations about other types of development that are coming to town, this is what's approached these landowners, this is what's approached the city. We can only, you know, we deal with the folks that come to us and approach us, and this is what we have, similar to the other types of development.
I mean, Terry, go ahead, and then I'll make my.
Two questions. One, we've approved sort of preliminary stuff for other developments in other parts of the city, and my experience is that we approve it and then things happen. I don't know what happens, but then it doesn't actually happen. What's your opinion on this? Is this, was it liked in the way? What's your sort of gut feel on that?
I would say that we always have to entertain anybody that wants to come in and propose a development, a future development. We have to go through the motions of that. If they choose not to build, that's their choice. It could be financial. It could be that something has changed with the project, but we are always going to have to be open to someone that wants to come in, propose an idea, if it's a privately owned parcel, and go through those motions of Planning Commission or ZBA. And, you know, I think, and if they move forward and successfully build, that's great, but if they don't, I, you know, I would hope that they are able to articulate why. I know for, I know why Raleigh Road didn't materialize, and that had to do with utility crossconnections, that it was too much of a financial burden, and he was hoping to split that cost with a development on the north side of Raleigh Road that never materialized. So, you know.
So I guess I'm asking for your seat-of-the-pants opinion. I was not at the Planning Commission. I don't know so many people that are involved in the building.
As the.
Planning chair or representative.
Representative, not chair. You know, so the developers in this case, and obviously, we're just talking about zoning, so that, you know, we have a whole slew of things before this ever gets to the end gate. But they, all of them were in attendance at planning. It wasn't just an attorney sitting there, and every concern that one of the citizens that live in the development that's across the street from it, you know, they came ready with answers for. They're local boys that are trying to build here. They're not some national group trying to do it. And every time that, you know, there was talks about lights, there was talks about green space, there was talks about, you know, park area, they were receptive and ready to answer questions. So it seems like they've put a lot of thought into this. It seems like this is something that they are focused on, so my gut opinion is that this is something that they want to get accomplished. So I don't foresee this as something that like one small hitch they're going to get up and leave, right? I mean, regardless, that's not really what we're here for today. You know, we're just here for, to talk about the zoning, which has nothing to do with their end game plans. We still have a lot of time before that, but, you know, my gut opinion is that they, they're interested in getting this accomplished.
That's what I'm asking.
Yep.
That's number one. Number two, you mentioned market rate apartments. What is it, what, how does it happen that market rate apartments become subsidized apartments? Does that ever happen?
Town and town.
I don't have any experience. That's why I asked.
Do you want to take a stab at that one? I'm going to ask some questions for me tonight, so if you have a comment.
Just a matter of economics. They're developing these, and their costs suggest a certain price point that they have to have to make it.
Right.
And so that's why it's market rate. They really are not in a philanthropy business of subsidizing it so that low-income people have housing.
Well, I don't think that's usually philanthropy. That's usually government.
Yeah, I mean, Section 8 housing, if you're going through the federal department, I mean, there's a process to go through that, and so you're getting approval from the feds to.
To be able to offer that.
To be, because then you're getting whatever benefit you get from a program out of a housing expert on this, but it's, you know, there's steps through it. And when we were at the meeting, the question was asked whether it was going to be Section 8 housing, which is the federal program, or if it's going to be market rate housing. And they said that they were doing market rate housing. So the fact that they're not already in the process of getting approval to be Section 8 housing, which isn't easy, I would imagine, as any federal program is, then I'm assuming it's not the case. They're going to be doing market rate instead of subsidized.
I guess I'm asking because my experience is kind of limited in this. Does it happen, does it ever happen? Does it happen frequently, or is it never, never, never? That you have market rate apartments that decide that, well, I think we're going to become Section 8 housing now. And so they go through the process?
Yeah, go ahead, John.
You have a lot more experience than I do.
So, and that, this is a great, like, work session, and we were talking about that earlier before the meeting about having a joint work session with planning and council to go through a lot of these things, but in a word, for, when a development is built and it's considered to be market rate in order for it to perform, for the developer to make money, they, through rentals, through the construction costs, the only time that you would see something like that would be 30 or 40 or 50 years into the lifecycle of development, where it'd be in a neighborhood or an area where the economic values are depressed, and then the property flips, and then there's renovations to be had in order to get it up to speed, and then there's tax advantages, so you agree to have a certain number of units as low to mod, low to moderate income, or Section 8 or subsidized. So it does happen, but in traditionally more urban environments.
So it won't be a beaten swish, I think.
No, no, no. No, they cannot come back afterwards and ask for something else. No, those are all, and in order to access those federal programs, those all have to be front-ended. There are things called COLIS, which are payment via taxes, which this board would have to approve, an ordinance specific to that, so.
Great education. Did that answer your question, Terry?
Yeah, I'm getting up to speed.
Good, excellent.
Maybe a couple of years, all this stuff.
Like John said, when we get into that Planning Commission joint work session with council, as we work on that master plan, some of these little bullet points will come up for discussion. Can I get a motion for this first reading of the amendment to the zoning ordinance for 301 Lynn Road, please? Thank you so much. Do I support? All right, thank you. If there's no further discussion, Holly, will you call the roll, please? Gilroy? Yes. Lannion?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Alsperg?
Yes.
Rhines?
Yes.
I think that is a first step for growth for our housing. I'm excited to see that, so I'm looking forward to meeting those developers and hearing more what they have to say. Our next action item is our Red Cedar River multi-jurisdictional grant agreement. I am going to turn this again over to our city manager, John Hanipin.
Thank you. So this is very similar to the resolution that we adopted for our Memorial Park, Anafar Trail Grant Agreement. It's contingent upon the Ingham County Trail Millage being renewed in 2026, but this is our partnership with Meridian Township and Williamstown Township to do clearing on the Red Cedar River. The resolution, the agreement is attached. I mean, we do recommend approval of the agreement. I know that Mr. Perone is representing Ingham County, I believe he drafted this agreement, so.
Yes, because it's a conditional agreement. I have separate meetings with the Parks Department to talk about the timing and all of this. Contingent on the millage in 2026, but if you look closer at the term, you get three years from the issuance of a notice to proceed, and then the compensation, it's expected to be in 2029.
Okay.
And you have to proceed.
So that's legal stuff. What this would do is it's grant funds that's provided for our jurisdictions to make sure that, you know, Williamson, we've invested a lot with kayak launches and access to the river, and it's pretty clear shot right now from, basically from Dietz Road, give or take a, down tree, all the way to our western border, but this would help clear the river all the way through Meridian Township, ultimately to connect the campus.
Yeah.
And part of the overall master plan is to have the river be accessible, the Red Cedar, all the way to the grant. So I think it's a great step. Again, our obligation is, just means that we're accepting the grant, and this was awarded, much like our Honor for All Trail Project, it was awarded, but it's contingent upon future approvals.
Great. Thank you. Yes, Steve?
So three year, two, three years before there's an impact on what we pass tonight as far as the resolution and disagreement?
Any other questions, Scott?
Does this maintain the river or just a one-time clearing?
This is, that's a great question. This is, it's quite a amount, it's a terrible amount of money to establish a fund to do annual maintenance, and that's a couple times a year. Basically, spring and fall.
I think that's great.
It'll be undetermined, just continuous every year.
Correct, that's right.
Yes.
So is that our staff doing the clearing? Are we hiring somebody?
No.
They had a great big hydro hoe that floated down the river.
At the time, it was very cool, that pulled those branches and logs out.
We keep two feet on the ground. We don't.
We were shipping our hoes down river.
Let's start that program.
On that point, though, there was a pretty large tree that came down at Memorial Park, and you can still see the remnants of it. We were able to pull that, but that was still, the majority of the tree was still on the back. We pulled that out of the river a couple weeks ago, but we're not.
I don't know, Nisa just bought a boat, so I don't know if that would be a plant.
Yeah, let's chief him out of there. Terry?
At the Parks meeting, it was my understanding that some portion of that money is going to be available in the next year. Sort of like, it depends upon the millage passing, but we expect it's going to pass and it's oversubscribed or something like that, but we are able to draw from that even in the next year. And I don't understand the details of that, but I bet you would.
I'm generally optimistic person by nature, but I'm somewhat skeptical that there'll be funds available, partly is the success of the program. I mean, and oversubscribed is, you know, city manager for talk, for somebody overcommitted money from these projects that need more money to come in. So it'd be great if the money comes early, and it just means that maybe this program starts earlier rather than later.
So it's not a guarantee?
Correct.
Correct. With that being said, who would like to offer up? Yes?
I'd like to move that we approve the Red Cedar River Multi-Jurisdictional Grant Agreement that was presented and shown to us.
Thank you so much. Your support.
All right.
All right, there's no further questions or discussion. Holly, will you call the roll, please? Hanson?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Alsperg?
Yes.
Rhines?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lannion?
Yes.
All right. Our next action item is our Michigan Municipal League Pool Director election. We do have a memo in the packet from our Michigan Municipal League, and what this is, is there are always candidates that are offered up for election. Our city acts on our behalf as council. Looks like this year, we've got two candidates, Thad Beard, manager from City of Brockford, and Dan Swallow, manager from City of Tecumseh. So I'm looking for, unless, John, you have anything you want to add to it, a motion to move this forward?
Other than I actually know these two, Scott, well, but I know them well enough that certainly comfortable with them representing us. They both do a good job in there.
All right. If there's no questions, I'm looking for that motion, please.
I'd move that we support the nominations I've presented for Mr. Thad Beard and Dan Swallow, representatives on the Michigan League, by the way, in the property poll.
Thank you so much. Your support.
Second.
Thank you. Holly, will you call the roll, please? Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Alsperg?
Yes.
Rhines?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lannion?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
We have our last action item, which is liability and property pool insurance renewal. We do have a memo in here from our city treasurer, Tom Mead, but I'm going to turn this over to our city manager, John Hanipin, because time is on here this evening.
Thank you. Tom's been doing some work on audit, and we'll see him at the October meeting. It's like audit or finance director Christmas, the day of the audit. So this is our liability and property pool insurance renewal. There's a slight increase this year. It's less than what we budgeted. We did have some coverage increases, and it's explained in the discussion. Patrol cars, the amount was raised for the underwriting inflation guard. We had a couple of additions. We had a new pavilion, two pavilions, but the one that we built at McCormick has significantly higher value than the one that was built at Volpears, so those are now part of the liability insurance. And then we did add an additional police officer. We had coverage for five, because that's what our staffing was, and we expect to be fully staffed in the coming year. That increase is offset a little bit by the dividends, and that's explained kind of further down. We do get projected a dividend of about $6,500 coming up in this coming year, and that's part of being in the liability pool. It has an overall valuation, and if there's not a lot of catastrophic claims, the members get paid a rebate by the funds that are invested. Have to answer any questions you may have. There's a lot in there.
Yep. And just for our viewing audience, this is something that we renew on a yearly basis, and so we go through it with a fine-tooth comb. Any changes, increases, decreases, are always explained to us. And with that being said, I think our city manager did add accurate description of why we have our increases, due to property values for structures and our police department. Does anybody have any questions? Steve?
You're right, John, there is a lot in here. So we get some increases based on coverage. There was some decrease, and plus we get a rebate. So what is the net-net bottom line difference this year or last year?
It's about a 3% increase. That's right.
Yeah. By less than what we budgeted.
We had budgeted, yeah, so this payment.
The number of years the increase, the budget was.
Yeah. We had budgeted $8,500, and the amount that we'll pay for the coming year is $79,000.
So, okay. Well, that's good. So we, yes, Terry?
When I looked this over, I thought, this is good. I wish I had an insurance that gave me a rebate, you know? And I, so, but I think you've explained that, in that they, it's like a profit sharing or something like that?
Yeah.
So if they don't spend the money that they could have spent, then because there weren't all the catastrophes it might have been, then that's how we get the rebate thing.
So, yeah, and there's just, on a very high level, there's two main pools. There's the MML pool, and then there's the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Agency. So there's two major, and then communities, you know, pool together, get insurance for that, and if they're.
Buying power.
If we all, if we avoid catastrophic claims, and that can be in the form of a lot of different things. It can be lawsuits, it can be, you know, natural disasters, fires, things like that. And so when there are a number of those, there's a dividend that's paid out, and you get a rebate.
Okay, great.
Want to talk to my insurance company about that?
Well, I just know how to explain it.
That's a great idea. I'm favored that.
Well, yes, Scott, go ahead.
Yes, I'm assuming you're comfortable with the amounts of all these for the, I mean, because it did say, you know, you could request an increase if you wanted it, but you're comfortable with that, obviously, if we use safe.
Yeah, that, yeah. Yeah, and that's a great question, and the treasurer and I do go through year over year to make sure that everything is covered and to make sure that we have adequate coverage, because MML, they'll come out and do, they'll do periodic audits. They also, from a risk management perspective, for safety and things like that, but, you know, it's our job to make sure that all of our vehicles or assets are covered. But we do, we do go through it every year. I mean, a lot of this stuff is boilerplate, but as far as like coverages for what we have, or maybe what we don't have, if we sell an asset or get rid of a piece of Parks equipment, then we would have a cover of that.
Great questions. Thank you both. Would someone like to make the requested motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the 2024-2025 liability and property insurance coverage proposed in the amount of $79,193, an increase in the property deductible from $250 to $500.
Thank you so much. Do I have support, please?
More.
Thank you. There's no further questions or discussion. Hollywood, call the roll, please. Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Osberg?
Yes.
Rhimes?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lianian?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
That concludes our action items for this evening. Moving into our discussion items, it's still the three same discussion items that we have. I'll read those off and then I'm going to turn this over to our city manager, John Hanipin. We have our construction project updates, our master plan update, and our main four safety improvements, which is our main intersection at the Grand River-Putnam intersection. So, John?
Yeah, thank you. And the first one I want to start out with, if you've seen the cones on Grand River, those are an MDOT requirement for consumers to work on their natural gas substation that's in between the depot and Gorslin's building over there. So they're working on the substation. They expect to be done sometime late October, early November. And they're just making upgrades to it. And that's the only impact. I know it's a long line of cones, but because they're working, if you were bad air today, they were doing quite a bit of excavating and they'll be starting point concrete there soon. But that's in order for traffic to safely get around it. So that's what that was. We've gotten a couple of calls on that. So hopefully that will be a fairly low-impact thing moving forward. We did enter into just a quick use agreement for a portion of Dalstrom and so they have some laid-on area for some of their materials. That way they're not getting into the neighbors or getting into the depot because they did ask to use that and they just gave them a category, no, because we don't have enough room for you to do that. But we were able to negotiate a small fee of $10,000 for them to use our parking lot for about 60 days.
Right.
And that just comes into the general pool and we'll be able to use that for, you know, general fund activities. So that worked out well. And then they're also required to restore anything over there that they may disturb. And they're also under strict orders that I do not want the folks that work at Subway or the other places who park near there being displaced.
Okay.
That was very clear or we present the agreement. And stay off the bleachers.
Yeah, the spongy toilet.
So, so far, so good. As far as our construction projects, we did, we did have some punch list stuff that we did at Williams, some of the asphalt repairs, they went okay. We are going to end, we are going to end up milling and repaving the intersection of McCormick and Williams because of just the imperfections there. None of them are really structural, but we want to make sure that we have a good uniformed surface when it's all done. We, there's little, you can still see the pink marker paint on some of them. Again, we used the infrared burner and tried to like smooth those out. It worked in some cases, some of the larger ones, but be that as it may. We are going to micro-surface that entire street. And that's not at any cost to the city. That's at the cost of the contractor, really the subcontractor. That'll take place probably in a couple of weeks, Phil, I would expect. And then we do have some other work that we'll do on Lloyd. We're not resurfacing that whole street because we don't, we don't have as many, you know, surface defects there. As far as restoration, our city crews, and we had this sort of perfect storm of, we did these major construction projects, disturbed easements, did some restoration, and then, you know, the telecommunications companies came through. And they've been really slow and lax at restoration. And so we, rather than having our residents suffer through any more, you know, weeks of that, we just launched our own crews and started doing restoration where they should have been. And we'll pursue cost recovery from, it's mainly SurfNet. One, Two, Three Net is another company that, if you've been out on the corner of North Putnam and Williams, right next to the planter, there's Coal Patch. And they, they were trying to get another permit to do working down. I told them absolutely not, not until that work's done. So they should be out here Wednesday. They have a little patch right in front of the Sun Theater as well. So, so work's moving on that. We did stake tree locations today. Most of them, all of them, but one were on North Putnam. We do have one on Lloyd. So we'll be planting trees through the contractors, not the city. We'll be planting trees here, hopefully at the end of this week or first part of next week. We do have more favorable grass-growing weather now, so that's good. So that'll take hold. And again, I just want to reassure folks that we're not, you know, like I said before, we're not going away. We'll make sure, we appreciate everybody's patience, but we'll make sure we get it right. So that's kind of effort construction, unless did I miss anything? I mean...
You got it.
Okay.
Excellent.
I've been living it 24/7, so it's easy to kind of like just roll off the facts. There's a couple of questions.
Yep, go ahead, Steve.
I just have a comment. I think that, and I've said this type of thing before, that we're in good hands with our city manager. And he has indicated to us and to others that we're not going to be left in the lurch as it relates to what other contractors aren't doing. I think what I saw this week, especially down on Lloyd Street, and what our staff did compared to what I had seen in restoration, was so much more professional and neat. So I applaud the staff and you, John, for following through with your commitment on that for us.
Yeah, I mean, I would second that in that, you know, I was surprised that it was our folks that I saw. Obviously, I'm on Putnam and saw them doing it, but it was a very professional job. You know, they had multiple people out there, lay the dirt, lay the seed, lay the hay down, whatever they used. And so I was surprised when they asked why it was our folks and not subcontractors, but I appreciate that it got done right because there's obviously dirt patches everywhere. So hopefully we'll be recompensated for that. But I appreciate the initiative of making sure that they got taken care of instead of just letting it sit.
Yep, and I will echo that, too. I had the pleasure of walking Williams with Phil, with Ray, with John, talking about what needs to be done on that punch list. Dan happened to get home and join us for part of the conversation. And that just speaks volumes to the fact that we waited a long time for these projects to happen. We want to make sure that they're done right. We want to make sure that we have a good final product at the end. So whether it's asphalt surface, whether it's grass, you know, it's all being taken care of because we know that the infrastructure below is going to last for a very, very long time. We just want to, you know, make sure that everything above lasts and you guys are doing a fabulous job in keeping us up to date on everything that's happening. And holding the contractors to the contract that we have with them is so important and so I appreciate everybody's efforts as well. Terry?
So you've mentioned this thing, it's called a performance bond. And I'm sure there are depths of details that could overwhelm us. We don't, I don't want to mention all the details. But it looks to me, I think the way it works is they put a bond, there's a bond. It's not their actual money, but there's an insurance or something like that. And if their performance is not up to speed, then they're fined or something like that. Or this money is used to buy other contractors to do what they should have done or something like that?
You make a claim on the bond, right? They were holding a $30,000 bond for SurfNet.
For SurfNet?
For the underground boring that they've been doing for the buried cable.
Yeah.
So those are the ones that he was talking about, that, you know, where they've got the little pots and the cable and stuff. They haven't come back and done the restoration, so that's...
I got one in my front yard that I put a bunch of dirt and grass, you know, that...
So thank you.
But, so the way that performance bond works is that at the end of the day, which is like, what? Like next month or something? If it's not good enough, then we get the money for it or how do we?
It's more complicated than that as everything is. And it is difficult to recoup costs on a bond. But I guess our hammer is withholding future permits to... And we can do that based on a lack of performance.
So state law requires that we give them a permit, doesn't it?
That's correct.
So we could, we could in the future withhold the permit.
Correct. For non-performance.
Oh, and that could be from the things that they laid in the streets, the short hop that goes to the house. So you spend the money in the streets, but you can't go to the houses until it looks good.
Well, I mean, and there's, again, there's a couple of things going on there. So for the contractors that we hired and we have, we have a contract and then we have the ability to pay them or not. And every project has retainage minimum of 10%. And, you know, two or $3 million contract, $300,000 is real money. So they're incentivized to finish things up. You know, I've said this before, it's a curious business model for a telecommunications company to make all their future customers mad. Right? And so you get to the point, and I do appreciate that the kind of words, I mean, it's relatively easy for me. I just have to turn red and be mad at contractors and then turn our great staff loose. And it's not, because there's a, well, why is the city doing it? I mean, it's a couple hundred bucks in material and a couple hundred dollars of staff time. And that's well worth it to take care of it now. And frankly, the last 15 days wasn't a great time to be planting or growing anything. So we kind of like, we were a little bit strategic in knowing what the weather would be and knowing that we'd have a good chance for to grow grass. Because the last thing I wanted to do was keep calling and emailing and either being told, yep, we'll get on and have it not happen from the subcontractors. Because they moved on, right? They're gone. They're, they put their stuff in the ground and they're gone. So, but we will, we will seek cost recovery for those things. And it's not a lot, but the last thing I wanted is to head into November, December and have people have mud as a front yard instead of, you know, growing the rest.
Thank you. Dan, you have something?
Floyd looks really, really good.
Thank you.
My question, you had mentioned One, Two, Three Net. We actually managed to withhold a permit currently because they had not completed restoration.
That's right.
Master plan update?
We had a really good work session. It was a little bit brief than the previous because we had a full planning commission agenda, which was great. And again, we are focusing on what we call NOLI, which is north of Lynn, and SOLI, south of Lynn, which is along Williamson Road. And really focusing on, you know, it's zoned a certain way and that's kind of a discussion that we put on hold, what the zoning, you know, is it right or isn't it? But it's the design of the street is as critical as what's, what ultimately is zoned there. So we'll continue to talk about that. The, we haven't officially closed the survey, but I'm happy to report, and we'll still keep, we'll get in a few here and there, but we have nearly 500 respondents for that. And so that's really one of the focus for our planning commission meeting next week, next Tuesday, to talk about the survey results and start setting some goals, objectives from that. And then also forthcoming, probably after the first of the year in January, we'll have a joint session with planning commission and council just to make sure we're on the safe page. It's going well. We're moving along at a good clip and it's been a good process so far.
Okay. And lastly, main four safety improvements.
Yes.
I know we talked about striping and possibility of lights, signage and...
We just, we just finally booked our, and partly because their fiscal year is different than ours, but we just booked our meeting for October 3rd. Mr. Westmoreland and I confirmed that meeting today. So we'll be meeting with MDOT next week.
Fantastic.
Share, we've shared the plan, but it's getting your feedback and talking about how we proceed.
Great, wonderful, thank you. Moving along our agenda, we did receive Sowing Growth Correspondence, the new Farmers Market Manager. We received a letter that we now have Perry Youngs as the manager for our wonderful old Farmers Market. It happens every Sunday, May through October, right behind us in the parking lot next to McCormick Park. So I'm excited to meet him. I know that Farmers Market is winding down. Scott, what's the last Sunday for Farmers Market?
There's two markets in October.
Two markets in October. So I'll have plenty of time to get over there and meet him. So I'm excited about that and I'm sure he'll have great things for next year as well. Department had reports. John, back to you.
We're trying to avoid talking too much, but just kind of wrap up with, we did, I think every committee but ZDA met this, in the current month that we're in, TIPA, DDA, Parks. And so I know our council liaison will give reports on that. October is going to be a busy month with events. There's a ghost walk, it's going to take place the first weekend, Chainsaw Art in the Park the second weekend, Taste of Williamson the third week, and then with Halloween weekend, which is in Wizards, we'll have that going on. So a lot of cool things happening event-wise and lots of opportunities for folks to volunteer. Council, you will get a confidential memo, just an update on our collective bargaining with the police department. You'll get that next week. And I do want to point out, you know, I mentioned Finance Director Christmas with the audit in October. City Manager Christmas is when there's five Mondays in a month. So I'm the only one who appreciates having more Mondays than that. So we will not have a meeting in two weeks. It'll be three weeks is our next council meeting.
All right.
Just a reminder.
Thank you very much, John, appreciate it. Chief, how are you?
I'm great, thank you.
Great. Glad to be here this evening.
Yeah, me too. First of all, I'd like to introduce Officer Matthew Peets. Matthew, stand up for me. Matthew just started this week, or last week, I'm sorry. He recently graduated from the academy. We sponsor Matthew through Waschnoff Community College Police Academy. He did astoundingly well. And he is starting his training program with Officer Colkins on afternoon and night shift. We anticipate he'll be done end of November, 1st of December.
Great. Well, welcome, welcome to the department and thank you so much for being here. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Second thing is I did an interview today with WILX TV on recruitment and retention. They aired it at 5:30. It was a really good piece they did based on a survey the police chiefs completed in Michigan through the U of M. It's a good piece. It should round again for the evening news, 10:30, 11 o'clock, if you wanted to catch it. We continue with now about bi-weekly meetings with Ingham County Chiefs and MSP for election security. And I'm working with Holly for city election security. We're participating in numerous training exercises for elections and strategy meetings with area law enforcement. So that will go off smoothly. That's all I have.
Wonderful, thanks so much. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Any questions for Chief, at all? Okay. We also have our Livingston County Department of Building and Safety Engineering report in here for work that's being done residentially and also on the commercial side. So it's always good to see things happening, whether it's home repairs or something new that's happening in Williamson. If you have questions regarding anything on that report, please see our city manager, John Hanipin. Yes, John?
I do want to point out, and there are some projects underway, but the Seshon Garden, it appears that there's been some resolution with the ramp, a potential ramp there. So hopefully we'll see some progress with that in the next couple of weeks.
Excellent, great.
Not anything the city is holding up necessarily, but should see some restoration of that concrete and then a kind of alternative ramp design.
Okay, excellent, great. But if you do have questions, again, our city manager can reach out to Livingston County and get those answered for you. Next on our agenda, we have committee, subcommittee reports. Anyone that attended a meeting that would like to share information? Terry, Parks?
Yeah. The optimists in the Parks group are looking forward to 100,000 tulips in the next year for river clearing money. And I guess that's maybe, they think it's going to be there. I'm kind of, I didn't understand how it could possibly be that the money is going to be granted at some time in the future, but we're going to receive it now. That seems like a time machine thing, so. But Parks was optimistic about it. And that was one thing, oh, Chainsaw Art in the Park. I brought this in case anybody didn't know about Chainsaw Art in the Park, okay? And, oh, pickleball, yes. So the plan is, pickleball is really popular, I'm surprised. But apparently, we have two pickleball courts here in McCormick Park that are recovered basketball courts. And there are apparently dozens of different pickleball courts around Ingham County kind of area, Lansing area. But there's a plan, proposal, to build four pickleball carts, courts in Dalstrom Park, sort of behind where the Red Cedar Jubilee Group is at. So the Red Cedar Jubilee would keep that parking lot area, but the grass to the west would become pickleball courts, possibly.
Oh, that's cool.
Okay.
So there, and that's apparently, there's enough room there.
I didn't know about that, Dan.
It's just... I was thinking that I know...
There's enough room there for four pickleball courts.
I know that there's infrastructure there that you're probably going to have to talk to some people about before any of that.
Yes, John?
Just, and it would, and this, this will be... Well, it would be, that was... So, so at the meeting, it's been full disclosure, and honestly, pickleball, I enjoy it. But, but with Dalstrom Park, I mean, it's more important that we have, and the motion that the Parks Committee adopted was to send to all of you a request to do a master plan for Dalstrom Park. Because as I pointed out at the meeting, when you have an event going on for 53 years, primarily in one location, you know, you certainly owe it to those folks that make sure that, you know, we're not moving their cheese by adding pickleball courts. But also, I mean, and again, folks have our kind of differentiating, the asphalt needs work there, the fence needs work. There's a lot of things that need to be done there. And pickleball is a good thing and it's, there's likely space there, but we need to master plan. And that way, you know, we, you know, we can, whether it's in that location they'd like, and I think the group, they're just, they just want to see four to six more pickleball courts somewhere. And that was just kind of like their first aiming point because it seemed like a good spot. So I think it's going to work all well and I think everyone will be happy at the end.
And part of the deal is to kind of do a little bit of a facelift to Dalstrom Park. Because Volunteers Park is, I mean, it's beautiful. McCormick is very good shape. Memorial's kind of coming along, but it's going to be a little wild out there, you know? But Dalstrom is a bit, you know, a bit...
It's untapped.
Eyes a little afraid of the edges, you know? So, and the pickleball cart might be kind of a thing that picks it up and spits it up a bit.
Dalstrom looks great when there's snow on it. You just sled down that hill.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
I did say it could be bought, but it was pickleball and then curling in the winter.
Yeah.
Well, see, exactly, yeah.
Then we have a deal.
I would, I would appreciate them pickleballs because we walk down there occasionally out of McCormick, you know, our family, and then it's always taken up because everyone wants to play now. So I would appreciate having some more.
Some extra pickleball.
And we have to be sure that the leagues don't chase us out, is that right? You had something sort of a, I wouldn't have even thought of that. But apparently there are pickleball courts that you can't use very much because there are pickleball leagues that reserve them or something? And there's some skuldudry involved in that, so.
Well, it's my fourth meeting of the week, so I was probably a little bit more preachy than normal. We'll leave it at that. Yeah, that's, that's a discussion we'll be had later. This is day, this is day one, so I'm...
I appreciate that. Scott?
Well, this reminds me of the tennis courts over by the elementary school. Is there ever been a discussion about that space?
Yeah, this is a good discussion for next time. Yes, but that's, that's a, hold that question because that will come up as we move through time.
I've had a lot of complaints about that.
Absolutely. Any other meeting updates, any of them? Yes, Steve?
We had a TIPA meeting and we approved an engagement opportunity with a project for the Ice House.
Fantastic.
So John will be obviously involved in that. And then John also, as previously requested, we have some funds in TIPA. And so John presented to us a list of possible projects which we'll need to flesh out. But at least we have some things that we can look at to utilize those funds.
Excellent, great. Anyone else? All right. Audience participation, we have another opportunity for five minutes per presentation. If anybody would like to come forward at this time. Hi, Monica.
Hi there.
Hi.
Hi. Well...
State your name, just for community public. Everybody knows you still.
Monica Schaefer, Ingham County Commissioner, District 15. So I'm here kind of giving a report of what's going on at the county. And before I came here, I was running a little bit late because I was overwatching them. The scout troop had over 90-some batches that they gave out tonight. And the Ingham County Commissioners had them at their last meeting, gave them a resolution for being Scout of the Year for all of, you know, the county area. So they got to come in and kind of present in front of the county, which is wonderful learning. But so, a lot of the local issues that I hear when I go around again, roads, 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 roads. But really what it comes down to is that we have a board commissioner meeting tomorrow night. And before that, we have what's called the Democrat Caucus. We have a Republican Caucus, too, but there's not very many of us, so it's the Democrat Caucus that kind of takes over with that. So, within that, we have a lot of boards that are appointed and different commissions that the commissioners appoint to these boards. There's a lot of different openings, and I bring these up because if we want representation, if the rural area wants representation in Ingham County, we have to step up for some of these. And so, since I know this is being filmed, I would like to go through this list and just see if there's any community members, anybody that has an interest in this, please apply. And you can apply through ingham.org, and you go to the board-appointed committees. So, with our Housing Trust Fund Committee, it's a brand-new committee that's being formed. We have a millage that is going to be on the ballot in November. That millage is going to be for homeless or low-income housing. That is the intent of it. We don't have a plan quite yet, but there is a plan forming for what that funding will be utilized for. But out of those, we need somebody with a financial institution background. We need a builder or developer. These are all different members of the boards that need to be compiled. A public rep, just somebody within the public from our area. And the bigger one is a member residing outside of Lansing, so a rural area member. And that's what I'm seeking out, making quite a few phone calls for that member. The Racial Equity Task Force has two vacancies. We've got the broadband task force. As everybody knows, there's a lot of funding coming down from the federal through the state to the local. So, we need a representative on a broadband task force. All of these, all you have to do is apply, and then you would go before either the Human Services or the County Services to interview for them. It's not a big interview. It's just to get to know you. Upcoming vacancies, as of December 31st, Animal Control Shelter Advisory Committee will have one opening. Community Health Center Board will also have an opening. And then, I just also want to make a note that for the Ingham County Historical Society, I finally got Mr. Mitch Lutske to apply. So, he will be, because I just think there's just so much that he can contribute. And the connections that he makes at the county will allow him to enrich our historical society here. So, he will be interviewing tomorrow at, or he'll be interviewing at the County Services Committee meeting. So, again, if we want representation, we have to get people on those boards that can actually say the rural area of Ingham County needs representation. So, it's going to be a tight, we're in the middle of budgets. The ARPA funding is drying up, so all that's going to be going away in 2025. All of it's allocated. We have a little bit here and there, but most of it's allocated. So, it's going to be a tight budget. We also did a potential hiring and a resolution that will be looked at and passed potentially tomorrow. We're doing a hiring freeze on all positions that are from the general funds, that would have to draw from general funds. So, that is something potentially coming up with that. That's already been passed through the committees. Just has to go before the board tomorrow. There is the river trail issue there. So, but I also just want to hit on the lawn courts. We got a lot of new officers that are coming into the Sheriff's Department. Our prosecutors, right now, we're having a lot of them that are finding other job opportunities due to financial situations that they're finding themselves in. Our prosecutors, we need to do a little bit more with them financially. And then, the Ingham County Health Department, we are receiving some grants for home visits for first-time mothers, low-income, first-time mothers. If we have that, we, there's so much that the county can do for low-income, especially even sewers and septics. Anybody knows anybody with a failing sewer or septic with low-income, please. And then, TCOA, I also sit on that board. One of the big things is that I'm excited about the senior center, the senior facilities coming in, and maybe we can absorb some of those services and bring them in there for the expansion of the critical services. Now, when you're talking, one last thing on the Parson Trails, so with that. So, there is a resolution that was passed at the last board meeting that we pushed through. That was for a three-years, $33,000 per year, $100,000. So, that's what they're talking about. And that resolution, that was a resolution that they really wanted, some of the funding early. The Parson Trails Committee at Ingham County did not kind of go for it. They wanted to push back, so we took the resolution up ourselves and pushed it up through. So, that was passed at the last Board of Commissioner meeting, and that'll be my first phone call tomorrow. Okay? So, any questions?
Can we apply for these positions?
Yes. Yes, you can apply for these positions. That's what, that's why the presentation of them is to try to get people from our district sitting on those boards, because when they're sitting on those boards, we have representation. That's the most important thing in order to understand Lansing and how it works and how we can bring it back into our district.
So, it's not a conflict of interest for us, is it?
I mean, if we did apply, we'd have to disclose that we're an ultimate...
He would disclose.
John?
The short answer is it depends. I mean, there's an incumbability of office standard which council can regale you with probably at some time. But we have to make sure that, in some cases, there may be a conflict, but the county should know that, should be able to disclose that to you.
Okay.
Yeah. I think we've had one who interviewed, and it was a conflict at one point, but I don't know.
Thanks for being here, Monica.
How much of a commitment is it to be in one of these boards?
Usually, once a month. Some of them are twice a month meetings, but a lot of times they're once a month meetings. You know, it depends on the committee that you're on, and some of them are quarterly. It all depends on the committee that you're on.
They usually meet in Lansing, of course, right?
Yeah, in different, usually the Human Services Department, the Health Department. A lot of them meet there. The one that, with the Historical Society, that'll be meeting in Mason. Just depends on the different committees, which you do it. But definitely, reach out to me. If anybody's of interest, please reach out to me.
Okay, Monica.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and go around the table for council member comments. I'll start with Dan. Scott?
Yeah, a couple of comments about the Washington Theater. There was a play last year called Magnolia Ballet. I saw it twice. It was really interesting. And the playwright lives in Chicago, a young guy living in Chicago. And they pursued him off to write a new play. It's called Thurston. It's on now. They actually paid, went to Chicago and paid this guy to write a play with some parameters. And I haven't seen the reviews yet. I suspect they're probably good. But, so, yeah, Thurston's on, and it looks interesting.
Thank you, Scott.
That's my promotion.
Absolutely. Thank you. I'm sure the theater thinks too. Brandon? Steve?
Just welcome again to our representative from the scout program.
Yes. Hi, how are you? Terry?
Lloyd Street looks really good.
Good. Excellent. Great. Well, I just want to say thank you to our DPW staff for storm cleanup from that last line of storms that came through. We had trees down in several areas of the city. The crew was right out there. They were able to remove trees from the roads that were blocking, from the rightaways. And also, that cleanup that happened after it, can't thank our crew enough. Ray's doing a fantastic job. He really is. I've talked to him several times. And he has just high praise for, he's been here, what, three months?
Three months, yep.
And so, he has high praise for being here, and so I really appreciate his enthusiasm.
Ray's okay. We kind of headhunted from someplace.
He applied, and we hired him. He applied, and we hired him. Thank you, Terry.
Amongst other outstanding candidates.
Yes, he was the best qualified candidate for the job. But schools been back in session for a little bit, over a month now. I think they all went back, what, mid-August? So, you know, just please be cognizant of the buses in the morning and in the afternoon for pickups and drop-offs. Chief, you still are doing good over at the elementary school with the drop-off pickup loop. Excellent. It's getting darker earlier. Sunday was the first day of fall. We've got football happening downtown. Please, please be aware that we have guests coming into our community. And we want to put Williamson right up there and be wonderful community members and to our visitors. I wish all of our sports teams good luck through this fall season. And with that, I will go ahead and turn it on my watch, that's 758.